Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Danville City Commission for April 23, 2018. The hour is 5:32. Look to my left and right. Call us to order. We will be led in prayer tonight by Commissioner James H. Atkins.
Let's pray. Most gracious and wise, we thank you for yet another spring day, and we thank you for the lives that we live in this beautiful town of ours, and we thank you for those who are there to protect and defend us, and we thank you for just the opportunity to come together and discuss the business of our first city, and we ask that and pray that what we do tonight will be pleasing in thy sight. In his name I ask it all. Amen.
Amen. We are honored tonight to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Cadet Major Ryan Herbert and Cadet Senior Master Sergeant William Campbell. Gentlemen, please come forward up here and lead us. Well done, gentlemen. As a small token of our appreciation, we'll pen's key to our city. Thank you. See you shortly. Commission, you have in front of your agenda. If there are no additions or corrections, I will move that we move forward. You move that we move forward.
Well, I could do that, but I think we have a couple of items that are maybe they're updated out there, or mine doesn't have them. Did we update them? Okay. There's a couple other things on the agenda. Is that correct?
We have two additions.
Yes, I don't know what numbers they are.
I think that we can determine that.
That's correct.
Do you want to add them in?
These two appear.
So what's been added is a resolution number 2018-042304. And would it be this municipal order is added is correct? Is that correct?
Correct.
No, just a request for a banner.
Okay. Thank you. Side move, that'd be accept the agenda with the two additions.
Motion is made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Terry. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
Do we know where, what numbers those are going to be?
Not yet. I will figure that out in just a moment. We're in the subject of tonight's, every night's commission meeting called Hear the Public, where we invite the public to take the microphone, speak on any subject that is on tonight's agenda. Later on in the meeting, there'll be an opportunity for another Hear the Public on subjects that are not on tonight's agenda, but we like to get the business of the city largely complete before we get to that section. So is there anyone that would like to talk about anything on tonight's agenda?
I'm JP Bradley. Will the corrected agenda be published?
Adam City Clerk?
No, it won't be published. It's a regular meeting, not required to. They can add items as last.
Can you repeat the added agenda items then so we can write them down?
Certainly.
Slowly, please.
Municipal Order Number 03-14-01-2011, and Resolution Number 2018-04-23-04.
Mayor, if I may, it's actually a banner request pursuant to that municipal order, but it's simply a banner request for the Bill Pollin Memorial Father's Day 5K. And the second is a grant application request for a Trails grant. Those are the two additional items.
Any further Hear the Public? Yes, sir.
I've got a question on this Center College zone change.
Yes, sir.
I understand it's going to take in the whole campus, 105 acres. What about in the future if they, there's a parcel of land that they've bought that's residential? Does that automatically change their zone to whatever the Center College zone is?
No, it would not. They would have to reapply and go through that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right into item one, and that is the approval of the minutes from previous meeting of April the 9th. Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval of the minutes of the meeting on April the 9th as written.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cardle. Do I hear a second?
Second.
From Commissioner Terry. Discussions, deletions, additions?
Yeah, I think I have a correction. Our City Clerk always does a great job, but I think on the proclamation for Earth Day that that was read by Commissioner Sarris instead of Commissioner Terry, and I may be corrected if I'm wrong.
No, that is correct.
Do you agree with that, Commissioner Terry?
I agree.
Is there anything else?
Any further additions, corrections? Seeing none, Chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion with the corrections, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item two is the Sister Cities Artist's Exchange Program. We have with us tonight Mary Beth Touchstone and Brandon Long. Oh, and Milton Regalman.
When we started nine years ago...
Excuse me. You want to take the microphone, please?
We started nine years ago. We do import-export, and we have a trade imbalance because we've exported a lot more than imported. We've exported probably, let's say, 450 folks from Danville in three Sister Cities tours, starting in Scotland, and London, and Ireland, in sports teams, men's and women's, and individual citizens, and also in cultural ambassadors and artists. We've imported five mayors. Only one mayor has gone there, Hugh Coomer. And we've imported, you know, reenactors and musicians for brass band and things like that. But their pebbles in our lake have more ripples because like the folks who come over and do the Westy Hill thing, they've trained 500 students, children and adults. And the Sister Cities Play at Pioneer Playhouse had like 2,000 people, the last one. The one coming up will probably have more. All of you should go. What's coming up right away, though, is our second artist exchange. Mary Beth.
Well, I'm going to tell you about half of the exchange, which is the artist that's coming to see us in the fall. He's a mural artist by the name of D. Craig. He's created murals in Belfast, Philadelphia, Los Angeles, and beyond. So I would definitely say that we're in the big lake now. He will be working with local high school students on a specialized technique, a cloth technique, and that permits the artist to actually work indoors and not be so dependent on the weather. And then the cloth is applied to a wall and becomes an outdoor mural. We are hoping to collaborate with the Heart of Danville, the Community Arts Center, the Arts Commission, to offer some public education workshops to local artists, and that way we can build some bench strength of mural artists in our own community. So that's the story on the artist that's coming to Danville. We have our own artist. In fact, he's the artistic director at the Community Arts Center, Brandon Long, and he's going to be going over to Carrick Fergus in about three weeks. So we brought Brandon here so he could talk a little bit about the work that he's going to be doing over there.
Thank you, Mary Beth. We're looking forward, my wife Kristin and I, this is Kristin here. People have been asking who all is going in the family, and Kristin's going. The kids are going to stay with Nana, though. I can't imagine us getting a whole lot done, but they're excited about that opportunity as well. They're going to beautiful sunny Nana's house. So in Ireland, we're looking forward to, in Northern Ireland, we're looking forward to working with Castle Tower School up there, which is a recently built school. It was like a $20 million school that they built in Ballamina, and we're going to work with them and their special needs children to create a mural that's going to go into the school, and we're really excited about that. We've been in and talks with them about how all of that process is going to work. It's going to be a really action-packed two weeks. I think we're going to, we're planning on creating and installing that mural in just four days while we're over there, so it's going to be a lot of hustle, but they've got a lot of great things for us planned to do over there as well. So we're really looking forward to it, and I thank you guys for sending us over there.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
Any questions or anything for us?
Bring back lots of gifts.
And thank you for the pins, the city pins. Brandon and Kristin will be handing those out, so appreciate it.
I hope you take pictures of what you do there so you can share it with us when you get back.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, we will. We're planning on doing lots of blogging and stuff, too, while we're over there, too, so you guys can keep on top of what we're doing.
Neat. Good.
We know that the Baron and Baroness of Carrick Fergus in their work at Danville had their third child this morning.
Yes.
A boy.
Wow.
All right.
All right. So noted. Thank you all. Enjoy. Glad you're going. Item three is a proclamation. Major, Cadet Major Ryan Hebert, come forward, please. I believe I mispronounced your name earlier, and I apologize. Why don't you go right here? That way, that way Mr. Clevenger can get a easy shot of your pretty mug. How's that? This is a proclamation in honor of Cadet Major Ryan Hebert, whereas Cadet Major Ryan Hebert has been a Civil Air Patrol cadet for four years, during which time he has been the cadet commander at both KY 222 Lexington Cadet Squadron and KY 122 Danville Cadet Squadron. And whereas Cadet Major Hebert has attended multiple national events, including the Air Force Para Rescue School in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and Hawk Mountain Ranger School in Kenton, Pennsylvania, where he's a staff member. And whereas he is a qualified ground team, ground team member class one, and ground team leader is also qualified as a mission radio operator. And whereas he has staffed cadet encampments both in Kentucky and Florida, and will serve as the cadet commandant at the upcoming Kentucky Summer Encampment. And whereas Cadet Major Ryan Hebert was named the 2017 Air Force Association Wing Cadet of the Year, as well as the Outstanding Cadet Officer Award, and has proven Cadet Hebert to be an excellent role model to the youth of Danville and Boyle County and surrounding counties. And whereas Cadet Major Hebert is commended for the honor and esteem he has brought to his family, school, and community. Now therefore, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City of Danville Board of Commissioners on April 23, 2018, do hereby congratulate Cadet Major Ryan Hebert on his accomplishments and urge all citizens to congratulate him and thank him for his mentorship to the youth of Danville, Boyle County, and surrounding areas, and wish him the best in his endeavors in the future.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir. Proud of you, sir.
Thank you.
And not to be left out, and certainly last but not least...
Should we accept them in?
We can do it singly or in total. However you choose.
Well, let's just...
Do it singly.
Okay. I move that we accept that proclamation into the record.
Second.
Motion is made in second. Questions, comments? Call question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Now, Cadet Senior Master Sergeant William Campbell, front and center, sir.
He never heard that before.
That's from a short guy. Whereas Cadet Senior Master Sergeant William Campbell joined Civil Air Patrol in August of 2016 and advanced rapidly through the program, and whereas he is a qualified ground team member class two and is also qualified as a mission radio operator. And whereas during the 2017-2018 Winter Encampment, Cadet Campbell was awarded Encampment Honor Cadet and would have been the encampment first sergeant at the upcoming Summer Encampment. However, whereas Cadet Senior Master Sergeant William Campbell was accepted into the U.S. Air Force Academy, proud mama back there, class of 2022, where he will join, where he will report June the 8th, 2018, proving Cadet Campbell to be an excellent role model to the youth of Danville and Boyle County and surrounding counties, as this appointment is awarded to only 1,200 of the more than 9,700 applicants. And whereas Cadet Senior Master Sergeant William Campbell is commended for the honor and esteem he has brought to his family, school, and community. Now therefore, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City of Danville Board of Commissioners on April 23, 2018, do hereby congratulate Cadet Senior Master Sergeant William Campbell on his accomplishments and urge all citizens to congratulate him and thank him for his mentorship to the youth of Danville, Boyle County, and surrounding areas, and wish him the best in the U.S. Air Force Academy. Well done, sir. All right, get a picture here. Don't move. Stay right there. Sure. But before we do...
I believe that's their lieutenant.
That is their lieutenant.
Yes.
LT, you got anything you want to add to this?
Absolutely.
Come right on up.
You don't know what you're just saying.
Thought he might want to have a little something to say.
Mr. Hebert, come forward, please, sir. I need protection.
Thank you. Well, thank you to the City of Danville. We are completely proud of these two young fine men. Being able to go, leaving our particular program and go into Air Force Academy is a very, very huge honor that not too many cadets within our wing, and a wing is a state, is basically the state of Kentucky. I'm not so sure if we've even had more than probably a handful since the inception of Civil Air Patrol from Kentucky go to the Air Force Academy, so that is a huge deal. Major Abear is a cadet major. Only maybe 15 to 20 right now are currently in the state of Kentucky, and I don't even want to say how many we've actually had throughout the state of Kentucky. But these two young men are what I can almost get a little teary-eyed when I think about these two guys. They embody everything that we want our young people to be, and they're growing up, the maturity that they're developing within our cadet program. We want to be able to come to our community and invite them to come out and witness what our cadets are doing, and then bring along your own potential cadets. I know everybody in here knows somebody who could benefit from this program, so I would love to have any and everybody come out. And we also need adult senior members to be able to help us, to be able to mentor and develop the character development and the leadership of these young people. But thank you very much, Mayor Paris.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Commission, for honoring our cadets.
Let's let each of these gentlemen have a word.
Well, needless to say, I wasn't quite prepared for that, but I guess I'll give it my best shot. I do want to thank Captain Rice back there. You were a big part of getting me in CAP and getting me started, as well as Major Abear over here. I really do appreciate you guys for bringing us in and starting 122. The way I actually found out about CAP is I went out to the Air Force Academy for a camp, and so I came back and I told my mom, I said, "Mom, I'm going to go to school there. I'm going to apply." So we started going through all this stuff that they wanted us to be a part of, all these organizations, and CAP was on there, and I had no idea what that was. No clue. But looking around, you know, starting to search some stuff up on the internet, we heard about the 122 squadron, which was actually starting five minutes from my house. And because of their amazing timing and me coming back, this is how I got involved in CAP, and that's what's really made an impact on me through this organization, is being able to be involved with some people that I wouldn't have met otherwise, and being able to get out into the state and make a difference through our volunteer service. So thank you, guys.
Let me just start by saying that Civil Air Patrol has been probably the biggest impact on my life as a young teenager. I joined the program at 12 years old, so I've been in about four and a half years now, and I started, I was probably about yaitzol. I know I'm not much taller now, but I mean I...
Welcome to my world.
I hardly, you know, had the confidence to go out and speak to other people. I didn't know much about the program at all, didn't know how to shine my boots or anything, but this program has taught me so much. It's gotten me out of my shell. It's got, given me the chance to meet people like Cadet Senior Master Sergeant Campbell here and be a part of his life, and really just give me the skills and the tools to be a driving force in the youth community today. And I want to say thank you to all you people of Danville and the mayor and all the commissioners here.
And Major, I apologize for mispronouncing your name. If I can give you one word of advice, get used to it, because with a name like mine, they butcher it all the time, and you just take it and roll right on. I also have to say that one of the mentors in my life is a fellow named Stuart Pass. And I remember Stuart saying many times, he and I would talk, he said, "If I could just get a cadet program out at the airport," he said, "that would be my greatest accomplishment." And he said that to me at least on three occasions that I can recall, and I can't help but believe that Stuart is as proud as punch. And I just, I thank you all for doing what you do and making that the kind of program that it is. Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
A pleasure, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Let's give him another round. Do we have a motion to accept the proclamation for Major Hebert?
No move.
The motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second. A discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Just a moment, please. Like to, for the meantime, I'd like to pass over item number five, which has to do with the Monarch Butterfly Pledge, and move right on over to item six, if that meets with your all's approval.
It's fine.
Like to go to item six, which is the proclamation of Certified Local Government Preservation Month. You have that in your packet. Let me read that for the benefit of the record. Whereas preservation of Kentucky's historic buildings and sites is a proven economic development tool that creates jobs, attracts investment, revitalizes downtowns and neighborhoods, stimulates heritage tourism, fosters new business development, assists affordable housing, increases property values, and improves the economic climate of communities, and whereas preservation has been established as public policy under the National Historic Preservation Act, which provided the framework for the Kentucky Legislature to create the State Historic Preservation Office in late 1966, and amendments to the Act in 1980 enabled successful partnerships between federal, state, and local government. And whereas the Kentucky Heritage Council and State Historic Preservation Office is responsible for the identification, protection, and preservation of archaeological sites and historic and cultural resources throughout the Commonwealth in partnership with elected officials, community leaders, advocates, nonprofit organizations, and interested citizens. And whereas the City of Danville and Heart of Danville has been a certified local government for many years in partnership with the Kentucky Heritage Council and the National Park Service, and has established historic preservation as a public policy, and worked to meet federal, state, and local historic preservation objectives. And whereas historic preservation is relative for the communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And because of the wealth of Kentucky's historic buildings, sites, structures, and places, it's important that citizens of the Commonwealth recognize and value this heritage. Now therefore, I, Mayor G. Michael Paris, and the Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Historic Preservation Month. Do I have a motion for this proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Terry. Discussion. I will add the comment that I echo the sentiments of this proclamation. We are so fortunate in this community to have a, still a treasure trove of wonderful structures. I always say, go back and look at the ones that are no longer here, and there are many pictures of those that are no longer with us. That's the secret to appreciating what we still have remaining. So I'm glad that we continue to focus on this endeavor. Any further comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item seven is the first reading of ordinance number 1912. This is the Center College Zone Change. Counselor Dexter, lead the way, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a first reading of ordinance number 1912. It's an ordinance changing the zone from GRA, Residential Large Lot, GRB, Residential Small Lot, GRC, Residential Civic Lot, NCC, Neighborhood Conservation Classification, HC, Highway Commercial, and DT Downtown, to ICD, Institutional Campus Development for approximately 105.91 acres, more or less, of real property known as the campus of Center College, and located generally along the following streets in Danville, Kentucky: West Main, Harding, Moores, Parable, North Maple, South Maple, St. Mildred's, Louise, McMillan, Row, North Fifth, South Fifth, West Walnut, College, Colonel, Beatty, Russell, West Martin-Luther King, Grant, and Dillahay. Again, this is a first reading. And my apologies to the signer for that reading. I thought about that about halfway through.
I move for approval of the first reading ordinance number 1912.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cardle. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Equal seconds for Commissioner Atkins and Commissioner Sarris.
He can have it.
I would just like to clarify on Mr. Klein's question about in the future, what will happen if Center acquires more property, and what's the process on that?
Well, property doesn't change its zoning classification simply by acquisition. So just as Center has acquired property in seven currently different zones, part of their plan would be to have a zone change request, most likely upon the acquisition of any further property to the existing classification.
And site plans and things like that.
Well, if a site plan is necessitated, then yes.
Thank you.
Well, we also should give some praise to our Planning and Zoning Commission because they recognize that this, we're setting their institutional campus development as a zone and never been used in a sense, and Center has about nine or 10 different zones. It all puts them in the same ballpark, and it sort of solidifies how they might approach planning and zoning in the future, but also how they may approach the City of Danville in the future as well. So it's a good cleanup job, in my opinion, to make things very uniform.
Any further discussions or comments? Seeing none, Chair will call the question, and for the vote on the first reading of ordinance number 1912. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. I'm going to insert in here, no, let me continue on to the Resolution 2018-04-2301. This is in regards to the Planning and Zoning Map Conversion Letter Approval. Mr. Hunter.
Thank you.
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 Yeah, this should be pretty straightforward, but let me tell you what you're looking at there. I serve on the Parable Map Committee with three elected officials, the mayor and Vicki Goode, and that's the committee that basically adopted or drafted the new Future Land Use Map. Well, our second chore after the Future Land Use Map was to look at zoning for the city of Parable, and what we did was overlay parcels over top of the city. And one of the things we noticed, there were several parcels where they're split-zoned or a part of downtown that they wanted to convert to different zoning districts. So as we went through the whole city parcel by parcel by parcel, what you see on that blue map, that's a generalized map, there were 166 parcels that were either split-zoned or slated for conversion to another zoning district. So this is a zoning map housekeeping exercise. Reason we're before the city of Danville tonight is you guys own a parcel in the city of Parable that is one of those that is either split-zoned or slated for a conversion. And actually, it's one of the conversions. You have a piece of property that's zone general, GRA, General Residential Large Lot, and it would be proposed to be converted to Downtown or DT. This zoning conversion is a little trickier in Future Land Use. Future Land Use, we adopted a new map. Everyone sort of agreed, we had an open house, Planning Commission passed it. Zoning's trickier because people's property, zoning rights, whatnot, words like inverse, condemnation, and takings are a big deal in zoning. So what we chose to do as a map committee was to look at every parcel and say, "These are the 166 we need to fix, but we're not going to do that without consent individual from property owners." So the Parable Commissioners have all divvied up 160-some of these properties. I think I got 19 or 30 of them, I don't know how many I'm doing. But I'm doing all the out-of-town folks, and we're either mailing letters or contacting them personally to see if they want to be part of this zoning map conversion. If they opt out, say, "Leave me alone," we won't convert their property. Once we get all 166 signatures or a subset of that, we'll take that zone change request to the Planning Commission, kind of a big housekeeping exercise, and then ultimately go back to the city of Parable to ratify the zoning on these 166 parcels or a subset thereof. So you should have that blue map, which shows all the ones we touched or we were changing, the proposed zoning map, and I, in that little handout I gave you, also showed you a picture of the parcel or the building that you own in Parable. That's why we're here tonight. And I believe the resolution tonight is simply to authorize a city manager to sign the consent letter and get it back to us so they can, so the city can be party to this zoning conversion. Again, you'd be going from GRA to DT or Downtown.
Do I hear a motion in favor of Resolution 2018-04-2301?
So moved.
Commissioner Cardle made the motion, thank you. Getting indentious here.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Discussion?
We're pretty sure that you guys have reviewed it over here, and everything looks good to you.
We have, we accept the motion or the idea of doing that.
Does this stem from behind the water company there?
It does, it does.
If there's no further discussion, I applaud you, Mr. Hunter, for getting this done. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now, Ms. Kirchner, I'm going to insert Resolution Number 2018-04-23-04. This is in regards to Trail Systems. What else?
There is a recreational trails program, grant program, run through the Department of Local Government that is an annual program. We have one open that we're finishing up, designed to go to construction on, that will take us from Stanford Avenue down to East Main Pond. We've had some ADA compliance issues there, so the design has taken a little longer than we had hoped, but we should shake that project loose. We had a good meeting with District Seven, so we're hoping soon this summer, which means that grant would be closed by the time they go and select for another grant to be put in. One of the top priorities of the Trails Committee has been the Lebanon Road Corridor. We've had really great partnership with the Industrial Foundation, with a fair number of industries located over there, as well as Heritage Hospitals we've partnered with. So we're essentially looking at a section that goes from the mountain bike trail or mountain bike park that we'll do this summer, all the way to Wilderness Trail Distillery. It'll be a shared-use path for non-motorized off of Lebanon Road. We've actually have a private landowner who's donating a significant parcel of land and have had really good conversations with UK Extension, BCTC, Maggot's very interested. We're even partnering with KU. So it's a, it's a pretty big chunk of, and it'll be our first destination trail. So instead of waiting a whole nother year for this grant cycle, we were encouraged to apply, and I'm going to let Earl explain to you exactly where this section is within the trail. Earl's the map guy.
Yeah, we did a quick sketch for you on the, on your table there, from Hughes Lane, which is if you're oriented where the text is reads correctly. Hughes Lane's on the north side of the page or the center 12 o'clock position. The Cayenne Line, the blue line, light blue, is the route that possibly could be funded with the funds available through this program, depending on the material that you use to finish the trail. That is not necessarily decided, obviously, yet. It's a little bit premature to decide on those things. Part of the trail could be paved, part of it could be class-high sand, depending on where it's at, and that would affect the length of trail for this grant application. In the end, you're going to try to connect Hughes Lane to Corporate Drive, and then utilize the green space easement that was provided with the industrial development in that area along the east side of that property as shown in the baby blue line there, all the way to Lebanon Road, potentially. It's fairly clear, and then we showed the line coming back to town, the future pedestrian access alignment, just to show one of the possibilities that we've talked about as a group.
It's definitely a multi-year, many-phased project. The exciting part about this area, I think, too, is we have a lot of private dollars interested in private investment as well. Grant money is great, and we, this grant has been since changed to an 80/20 match, which is definitely worth applying for. But we're also looking at capital campaigns and recruiting industry out there to pay for sections, and so we have big plans for this area. This would just be one part of it.
Do I hear a motion for Resolution 2018-04-23-04?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears, and Commissioner Atkins with the second. We're in discussion. Jennifer?
Yes.
You referenced it was an 80/20. What was it before?
50/50.
Okay, that's nice.
Yeah.
And the total amount of the grant is?
200,000, maybe?
Actually, it'll, 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 we'll cap this grant at 100,000. So it'll really, the match won't exceed 20,000.
I might.
If that was Earl, I was like, what is that over there?
That is very true, just in case you didn't hear mine.
Somebody's stumbling. I didn't know.
Make sure those with, heard that opium or that range of noise could hear it.
I'm glad that's happened to somebody else besides me.
But yeah, we've met with, we have a group that we've formed, Darren Tipton from BCTC, we have UK Extension, and there's a lot of plans with the BCTC addition expansion. UK Extension is doing a pavilion and some trails. Maggot has a great interest in having more walkability and green space for their employees. So there's a really great synergy coming around together in this, this project.
I have a question about, as we develop these trails, we also develop additional maintenance issues. How are we going to deal with that going forward?
As we've done it to this point, we have piecemealed it. Essentially, if it's a trail in the city, the city mows it. If it's in the county, the county mows it, and if it's on a state road, then it's theirs. And it doesn't get mowed very often. What we're looking to do, what the goal would be, and we consider trails to be linear parks. From a trails perspective, we think trails should connect parks, we should have integrated, integrated green space. So really, in a perfect world, the trails wouldn't be separate from Millennium or from Jackson. There would be one holistic plan that includes maintenance and construction.
Does Parks and Rec accept these as part of their mission?
We have gone to Parks and Rec, and we have talked about it, and they're very supportive. But the current state of Parks and Rec doesn't allow for it to be integrated as we wish it could be.
When you say current state?
There's not enough staff to maintain, and they're, you know, the main focus is Millennium. So this would, this would take, Trails being all over the city would take mobile maintenance crews and things for mowing, and so fortunately, we've, we've been able to get into city maintenance contracts, but-
So this is really a conversation that needs to be brought to Parks and Rec Committee?
Yeah, right. Well, what we've done is brought it to the steering committee. We've, I've shared tons of information with Brant Stetter Carroll, being very vocal that this needs to be something on Parks and Rec's radar, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner, I'd like to insert the next item, being the banner request. This is for the Bill Pollam Memorial Father's Day 5K Run. Son Sam Pollam is with us tonight.
Yes, thank you. I am not Gene Crowley, but I am Sam Pollam. I appreciate you all giving us some time tonight. This would be the fourth year of the race. We're excited, it gets bigger and bigger every year. Again, proceeds for the race go halves to the Danville Schools Education Foundation, the other half to Free Year's Hope. We are hoping to have the banner hung outside here at City Hall from June 4th through the 16th, with the race being on that Sunday of Father's Day, the 16th.
I have to ask this every time, I assume this meets city staff ordinance?
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the banner request for the 5K in honor of our friend Bill.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins, second by Mr. Cardle, thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Straightforward.
Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Cemetery Committee recommendations from the infamous.
Notorious.
He used that word, not me.
Well, I'm glad to be back. Just want to bring you up to speed on some of the issues the Cemetery Committee has been dealing with. I would like to say how grateful and delighted we are with the acquisition of the additional lot at the cemetery. We've got great plans for it somewhere down the road. Right now, there is an issue of drainage. We're going to use the availability of that lot to work on the drainage for the, what's been known as the cremation circle, and that's going to help with also First Street, some issues on First Street. So right now, we're in the process of cleaning the lot, getting all those excess bushes and weeds and just general junk plants out. Then Earl and Tom Byerly are going to work on the plan for how we proceed from there. The latest recommendation of the Cemetery Committee, and we have made this recommendation before, we've been talking with City Manager Scott about the possibility of looking at raising the lots to an all-uniform price. We have prices in Bellevue that range from 325 to 1250, I believe. And we'd like to have some degree of uniformity in the cost of those lots. They're all the same size, they're just in different areas. Another issue that we would like to deal with is the cost of opening and closing a grave. We're one of the lowest cemeteries in the area on the cost of that. We charge 600, and we'd like to go to 800 if possible. These are all going to be incorporated in a report that Mr. Scott is preparing. We just didn't have time to get it finished before tonight. But these are the things we'd like you to look at consideration and work with us and Mr. Scott on this process. We have another issue that we are looking at. I don't think it takes any action of the Commission, but it's just some of the lots. We are now selling lots only in parcels of two, and you get quite a few requests for a single lot. So Jason is in the process of going through the areas and finding where there are possibly sections or small, just rows perhaps, where we might just designate those for single plots. We have had several requests just recently, which has brought this to our attention, that not all people need two lots or four, six, or eight. So these are things we're looking at. We will ask you to consider in the future Mr. Scott's report, which we will come back to you with when he gets through with it. But I think these are things that would improve our cemetery, would give us a little more working capital possibly, and we have other, one of my longstanding desires is to see a pavilion or some sort of shelter at Bellevue. We've talked about that before. It is in the master plan, and these are things that we will get to one at a time, perhaps. But this is just in the future. Anybody have any questions right now for me?
Comments?
I don't think so.
Well, I have one. These uniform prices, I guess you're speaking just of Bellevue?
No. This is, we have talked about pricing at all the cemeteries.
Okay, and making it all uniform?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the other question is, the shelter or pavilion at Bellevue, I know there's been a question raised about a shelter and a pavilion at, well, I call it the Duncan Hills Cemetery.
Hill.
Hillsdale.
Hillsdale.
I said, yeah, okay. So I'd like that to be a part of the discussion, and the discussion comes about a pavilion at both. And then, I was out of town this past Thursday, so I was hoping you was going to give us an update about what happened at the Meadow Lane, Kirby Lane Cemetery. Was there any updates you all could share with us on that?
I can later on.
You can?
Later on.
Yeah, it was successful. I mean, there was a lot of, lot of folks out there and a lot of activity. I did not, I was not able to get out there myself. We were giving away compost Saturday as well, so we collectively, Public Works had a busy day, and we did get out there and was able to participate in that as a city. But there was a lot of volunteers out there, and those guys are to be commended for that effort, definitely.
Still don't have any questions asked about the ownership of it?
No, that's going to be a while, and we're actively working on that with Stephen.
Okay, great, because I'd love to have that as become a part of the Cemetery Committee's, I don't want to say responsibilities, but, you know, oversight, that they continue reporting back to us about the progress there, and I know there's got to be some stump removals and some holes filled and all kinds of good stuff. I keep visiting it because I keep finding information about more and more men who served in the Civil War that are buried in that location, so it's really important to me to see that place revitalized, so.
That's more or less a historic site. It is not an active cemetery.
Yeah.
And it would fall under sort of a different purview than what the cemetery responsibility deals with the active cemeteries in Danville.
Yeah, I agree, but I'll, well, I'll guarantee you, once we get in there and we ever get it cleaned up, there're going to be some active sites there for somebody, hopefully the city who owns it. But an active cemetery to me is one that we maintain and keep clean, as well as we bury new and update, have updated burials, but it's important about keeping it maintained.
That's true, but the Commission's also going to have to look at giving us more money.
Oh, I understand.
Because the more land, the more property we have to maintain, the more it costs.
Well, again, and remember now, all of it's on the city, it's not on the committee.
Absolutely.
So let's not say, okay, so my thing is that it just, it needs to be a part of the focus of that committee if we can acquire- of that Committee if we can acquire who, who really owns it. It might not even be that something the city ends up owning, but I just keep hoping that one day it'll be a part of the city, because that's the only way it's going to get maintained, properly.
That's, that's something to look at in the future.
Yes, ma'am, that's right. But every time you bring a Committee report down here, I would encourage somebody to have that as a part of the report, because there's two or three other ones out there that are going to get, going to come to the surface as well. I gotta feel it. Mr. Mayor, you said you had an update?
Well, I was just going to give a remark later on, but I'll go ahead and do that now. I got a text from Mike Dennis, who said, "The Public Works Department came through today. We worked at Meadow Lane for over three hours and 35 center women cleared half an acre of land in three hours, with the city beginning to haul off the slash."
Wow.
"We still have huge piles in the cemetery, but it's a stark, wonderful day restoring a cemetery that was established by 1840." So it is, it is, it is an important historical piece. We just got to do a proclamation about that and our cemetery is part of our history without a doubt.
Yeah.
Norma Gale knows this, that I'm, I'm, I think that our cemeteries, they are a, they're part of the service that we provide as a municipality. There's no way you can, you can have it be a segregated P&amp;L, profit-loss. It, it's not going to work that way. It's just part of the service. The head of the Lexington Cemetery, should I say the executive director of the Lexington Cemetery, his mother, his mother lives here in Danville, out on East Main, and we have met with him and he is more than glad to assist us.
Absolutely.
Norma Gale, I'd called your attention last, yesterday, CBS Sunday Morning, where they're beginning to produce gardens on top of the gravesites.
Yes.
In order to get people to understand that, you know, there, there is life after death. The young kids get in there, but it's also a way to make the cemetery beautiful in a regulated way. So I would encourage you to look at that, look at that segment. I, I think that we've got a lot of work to do and, and I think this Commission is, is more than willing to roll up its sleeve and, and, and take a big bite of it and move it, move it best we can.
I have called, I've talked with Mr. Penn, who is the director at Lexington Cemetery several times. He is more than willing to help us as an advisor in any way he can. I've also been in contact with the director at Camp Nelson. And these are all, all really good resources that we can use and they are more than willing to provide us assistance.
I've also scattered the thought, and, and I know a member of the Beautification Committee is, is in the audience today, but I think it's past time that the Cemetery Committee and the Beautification Committee join arms and, and beautify our cemetery.
I feel like we have a good working relationship. We have been able to acquire several trees and plantings through beautification, for which we're very grateful, Mrs. Hammer. But it is, it is something, it's not just you on this side and us over here, it's the entire city who has a really, we all have a stake in the cemeteries. There's not a person in the city of Danville, except people who probably are newcomers, who don't have some connection to one of the cemeteries. And if you haven't been out, go look at them. They really are in better shape than they've been in a long time.
Correct, they are.
We unfortunately only have one staff member dedicated to working at the cemetery. So you can imagine how difficult it is to get as much done as we do. I'm just really grateful to Jason Turner, who works really hard.
Perhaps in our upcoming budget discussion, we can, we can see what we might be able to, to do there.
That's why I'm here tonight, because I know you're going into budget. Thank you. If nobody has any more questions, thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So with that segue, Mr. Scott, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I don't have a lengthy report tonight, but I will have a lengthy report on Thursday of this week at 5:30 where I will present for the Commission, Commission's consideration, the recommended draft budget, if you will, for the next fiscal year. It's a large endeavor that was a bit more complicated this year due to the uncertainty of the state with regard to pension contributions that might be required. We seemingly have resolved that for the most part. And so it's an exciting time to talk about the future of Danville and what projects we may be able to contemplate completing in the future. So I encourage the public to be here if they have an interest in, in observing that conversation on this Thursday, the 26th at 5:30 in City Hall. I will also say, as part of the overall review of our needs, we, we look at the present, at the future, and sometimes at the backside of things as well. And I will say, one of the topics to be considered will be the recommendation that the City Commission have some sort of salary increase, which has not occurred for, since 2001, I believe, approximately, over 17 years. So that will be a part of the discussion and I wanted to let the public know that in looking at the salaries being paid other cities throughout Kentucky, it seems that we have neglected that area of our operations for some time. So that will be a small part of a much larger conversation that we will have on Thursday.
How long do you think Thursday's meeting will last?
It depends upon...
I'm saying that to prepare the public.
Well, typically, I think it lasts an hour to an hour and a half, something of that nature. But I mean, there's a lot to discuss in terms of our, our plans, our current activities, what's not completed from the current fiscal year, what needs to be initiated in the next year, how we're going to finance all of those projects, how we're going to, to operate in a solid way. I think it will be a good report and a good discussion. I think the community will be encouraged from that if they attend or follow the reports of that in our newspaper following the meeting. But I'd say about an hour to an hour and a half discussion, probably.
Two hours.
Three hours.
Well, it could be.
Two hours.
It could be longer than that.
Two hours.
That means three, right?
I'll have dinner before I come.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Scott? Seeing none, we are going to move in this section of our meeting called "Hear the Public", as I promised earlier. This is a public opportunity to take the microphone about anything that's not on our agenda. Ms. Moore. Should I say Kagan Moore? How do you want it?
People call me Dollhouse sometimes and I respond to that, so whatever works. Thank you all for hearing me. I, I wasn't able to, to be at the budget meeting recently, and so this is kind of my little contribution, and I will be there on Thursday. So I thank you all for hearing me. It, it, this is about wayfinding. It's a plug for you all to be generous with the wayfinding project. A lot of community time and effort has gone into the wayfinding project, a lot of it from, from y'all who are here and a lot of community members who are, some are here now, many have been here otherwise. And, and, and this is a project that at least four generations of, of tourism directors have wanted to have, you know, and, and could never do it. So, so this goes back a long way and probably beyond that. I, I only know as far back as, as Kate Bergren wanted, wanted wayfinding. And, and I think it's also nice to, to be able to show people that, you know, something comes out of a consultant that the city hired, something tangible and something that the community can, can enjoy and feel good about. They're, they're a, a concrete possession that, that everybody can, can see and can enjoy and can appreciate. And once they have been installed, we won't have to keep spending that money again and again and again and again. They will, you know, there may be some maintenance, but basically that will be an expense unlike, you know, certain bills that are just perennial kinds of bills. And, and, and it is also a way of, of supporting the downtown, so it, it should feed itself. And there are a number of community organizations who, who are interested and have talked in the past about being able to contribute. Tourism is one and the Heart of Danville, the Creative District have all talked about having some funds and, and I think that if the city, you know, is able to, to really put some weight behind it, then, then some other organizations can kind of join into that, so. Thank you very much. I'll see you all Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Are you squatting at Fly's Wilmer or are you coming up to speak to us?
I have a little point of interest tonight. I was looking at, and some of you may have noticed this too, the Time Magazine, this week's Time Magazine is the 100 Most Influential People in the World, and at the beginning of the magazine, they have a map all over the world where people were born that are the 100 Most Influential People. Danville, Kentucky has a pin in that map, which I thought was highly interesting. Apparently, one of the Parkland High School students, they highlighted five of them. And one of them was born in Danville. It's the Wine family. And I remember when they were here. I don't know if there's anybody left in town or not. And I've forgotten the first name of the young man who's a student at Parkland, but I thought that was interesting when I noticed Danville, Kentucky on the world map of Most Influential People.
Did it say who else in Danville?
That's the only one.
The only one?
Yeah. Huh? Yeah, that's pretty good, but that's interesting, isn't it?
That is.
But it is, he is at Parkland High School now, so the family is in Florida. But they were giving birthplaces and that was, that was, it was Danville, Kentucky.
Once again.
Good catch.
Thank you, Wilmer.
I didn't see that one.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move into Commissioner's comments. I pretty much made mine.
I'll start.
Please do. Ladies first.
I think we would be remiss if we did not mention the passing of Ms. Barbara Bush. And I just wanted to share a couple of the quotes that are out there from her. And the first one is, "At the end of your life, you will never regret not having passed one more test, not winning one more verdict, or not closing one more deal. You will regret not, time not spent with a husband, a friend, a child, or a parent." And the other is, "And who knows, somewhere out there in this audience may even be someone who will one day follow my footsteps and preside over the White House as the president's spouse. I wish him well."
No political comments here.
I do not have my sights set on the White House, but I do like to think that it is women like her on a national level that have paved the way for women like me on a local level, so.
And she did it with a gentle but firm hand and with class and...
Yeah, absolutely.
You'd like to be, you'd like her to be your grandmother. Everybody would.
I wish him well.
Wish him well.
I will add that this past week, we had the Volunteers Luncheon, which is, for this mayor is always a highlight. That is a room full of people, and that's not even all of them. It's our quick, easy way of saying thank you. We feed them a meal and we can't thank those folks enough for, for what they do. And so that's, that's a good day.
Absolutely.
I guess I need to thank the city and thank our community for the ML King 50th March, well, last Sunday the 15th. Wow. But I was just really proud of my community and really proud of the Committee and the subcommittees that worked on that and really proud of the city for agreeing to let us move forward such a celebration. And it was really interesting that the Advocate Messenger did a flashback 50 years during the week of Dr. King's assassination, the 7th or 8th of April, in that the city of Danville, the mayor, the Honorable Edward Henson, declared it a ML King Day in Danville and asked for everyone to fly their flags and have masks. And then on that Sunday, the Local Ministerial Association asked all churches to have a moment of silence in the honor of the life and legacy of Dr. King. But that was very timely of you guys to put that out and it was like 50 years later, we were still moving and marching forward. It was very timely and I thank you for your coverage and thank everyone in the community for their attendance. You come up with an activity or project to do and then when other citizens jump on board and actually assist in implementing it, it really went well. And I want to thank Commissioner Cottle, because Commissioner Cottle took charge of the, the media coverage and I didn't see it, but it got our event highlighted on two of the Lexington television channels.
Oh, did they? Good.
And they, I heard they talked to you on the, on the channel, interviewed you, right? But it was a great day and it took a lot of different citizens, a lot of different folks to work on that. Ron Scott, it was great assistance and Joyce and Donna and Ash, is it Ashley? Assisted with helping the old guys get the, the literature that was passed out in a workable, respectable fashion so that folks could read it, but really a great community effort. So I want to thank everyone who had any hand in our involvement in that activity.
Jake, you did a nice job on that, so I'm hoping you'll build upon it for next year.
Well, we do have another event. Well, we have several events, really. The Soul on Second Street event, the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet. We have a community book read that we raised a lot of money. We're going to do a community book read. It will be, books passed out the middle of September and then we'll have discussion groups all around the city of Danville sometime after fall break in October. And then CC, well, all these events that I'm spouting out about, they've all made a quote-unquote commitment to have the, the remembrance of Dr. King as a part of these different events. So it'll be really interesting to see how that, how that unfolds. But it was a great, great weekend.
Anything from this side of the room?
I think my, I was going to talk about the Volunteer Luncheon and the Martin Luther King Day, so I think I've been, I've been covered adequately here, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll play off your comments, Mayor. I want to give a public shout out to the volunteers that showed up on Friday afternoon to help clean up Constitution Square and those on Saturday morning cleaning up Main Street. So we've been blessed with a community full of volunteers and we don't want to not recognize those folks, so.
Would you care to comment on Earth Day?
Pardon me?
Would you care to comment on Earth Day?
Yeah, Earth Day, well, it was Earth Week. It was Earth Week. There was a lot of activities going on there. I was not able to attend most of the activities that went on through the week, but Saturday, there was a nice crowd. It was a beautiful day out there at BCTC. And I think that the organizers are pretty happy about what happened there and it certainly keeps our awareness about our environment, yeah. So I think they did a great job.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right into financial and payment of bills, which you have in front of you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll offer a motion to approve a bill list dated April the 23rd, 2018, in the amount of $344,936, $926.89.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins.
Second.
Through here, second by Commissioner Cottle. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 12 is the reimbursement resolution 2018-04-23-02. This is a resolution reimbursement. Michelle, floor is yours.
Yes, before you use the resolution, in order for us to borrow money for the fire truck, after we purchased the fire truck, the time is coming and it's almost built, I'm told, and we'll need to pay it before the end of this fiscal year. As you recall, during the budget process, we were going to borrow that money, so in order to get a good rate with the fire, when we do the fire station, we haven't borrowed that money yet. We will be borrowing that money... that money yet, we will be borrowing that money soon, but not yet, so we need to do a resolution in order to reimburse ourselves for when we do.
Well, I'll move...
Any questions? Motion, sir?
Yeah, I'll move for the passage of resolution 2018-04-23-02.
Motion is made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, second.
I'm going to defer to Commissioner Terry over here, it's a second. Any questions or comments?
No, I think the only comment has already been made. We discussed this before, this is something we already decided to move on, it was part of our budget process last year, so.
Yeah, I'm glad we're moving forward, because this has been around for a couple of years, so it's time to move forward. Any further?
Chief's got a big smile on his face, so.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 13 is resolution number 2018-04-23-03. This is the Lexington Avenue Park Playground Equipment Approval. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You have in front of you the resolution, it authorizes the purchase of $111,541 worth of playground equipment to be installed at the park. The purchase will be made through the Kentucky Purchasing Cooperative, which is ran through the Department of Education, from what I understand, that's the cooperative through which they do, the schools do their purchasing, we're allowed to purchase through that program, and the purchase will be made from Bluegrass Recreational Sales and Service, as identified on the quote attached. There's two play areas, a little kids' play area and a bigger kids' play area. As you walk out there, you can see the big sycamore tree and the circle around it. The little kids will be on the side closest to the road, you can see those circles out there now that have been...
You mean which road?
The Parkview, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Parkview, and you can see the circles if you drive along Parkview, there on your left, as you drive into the park. Over in front of the parking lot, there will be additional area being constructed there for the five-to-12-year-old playground equipment.
I'll move to accept resolution number 2018-04-23-03.
Thank you, Mr. Sarris, how about a second?
Second.
Mr. Cottle, thank you. Discussion.
This quote does not include the installation, that will be an additional charge, and that will be bid, and so we're advertising that hopefully Wednesday, if all goes as planned, and we'll bring that back to you towards the end of May.
This doesn't include the splash park?
Does not include the splash park, and we will also be advertising that or soliciting that in the next couple of weeks also.
What was our budget for this part of it? Did we have a separate equipment budget?
I don't remember.
Michelle?
This was in line with what we had predicted.
We had said that we were going to budget, we didn't know we would get to this park this quick, so we were going to budget part of it in the fiscal year we're in, and part of the next fiscal year. Well, since we can do it all this fiscal year before the summer starts for the children, we are asking to do that, we have moved around things in the budget in order to do that, so it's within budget, but out of the year's budget, and then we'll do the splash pad in July for the next fiscal year.
If you haven't been out there, it is going to be a showpiece. It's going to be a great entrance.
I agree, it's looking really good, and it's going to be a great thing for our community, and just playing off of Commissioner Cottle's, even though this whole thing wasn't budgeted in this current year, it has been budgeted, it's something we have talked about, so we're just apparently needing to move on it while we can, so it's good for the summer.
Yeah, and folks have asked a question regarding the water that stands in the low area, that will be a rain garden, and an area intentionally designed to be low, so that we can do the stormwater public education, there will be some passive education signage put up down there, and also, that's an area where when, as a matter of fact, we have a couple of school tours, I think three scheduled for this week already, but, so that's fairly common, and what we would like to do is, as the school kids come out there, we would like the teachers to have an opportunity to do the water education in the rain garden, so that we understand the local water cycle that we've tried to describe, which is all water that lands in Danville, ends up back in Lake Harrington, which you drink, so if it goes down your wastewater system, or through a storm drain, we recycle that and reuse that.
Very good.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 14, property demolition list, we're discussing an action. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. You and the commission members will recall at our last meeting, we reviewed the report prepared by our city attorney on March the 26th with regard to the list of condemned properties, and at that last meeting, I recommended that the city commission take action with regard to four structures, or four properties. Two of those had had their buildings demolished, and two had not, and the request was made and agreed to by the commission that we review current photographs of all those properties that still had structures on them before we made a determination as to erasing those structures. Those photographs are contained in your packet tonight, and I think generally, they further demonstrate that these properties are in rather deplorable condition. There is a footnote in your report tonight with regard to that one structure at 222 East Martin Luther King Boulevard, and our code department is recommending that we do not consider demolition of that property at the present time because of pending discussions among the family members that own that property, and perhaps there will be a different outcome that would not require the city to take action. But the pictures are before you of all the properties, including the one at 222 Martin Luther King Boulevard, and I, or maybe more appropriately, the code staff could answer any specific questions you have with regard to those properties or the more recent photos.
I want to thank you for the good work that someone did, and endangered themselves to get these pictures for us. They really are convincing as to why we need to take them down. So my comment would be to the folks on 222 ML King, show some real due diligence, because my vote today would be to take that out, too. Scary.
At our last meeting, we talked about another property, and I'm not certain I can identify that other property we talked about, but it was among those reviewed, and we can find that very quickly here, but if we do consider the code request to take no action for the moment with regard to demolition on the Martin Luther King property, that would leave really only one property that is recommended for demolition, that's the property at 702 Perkins Avenue. The other two properties are vacant lots because they've already been removed. So, one of the questions before the commission is, do you wish to demolish the property on Perkins Avenue or not, and further, what direction would you give to council in terms of filing legal action to recover our cost of liens on any or all of those properties?
Do I hear a motion?
Well, I want to ask a question. First, 702 Perkins Avenue, that's the brick structure, but it also is boarded up pretty tight so nobody could get inside. There are no internal pictures.
Isn't this the one that Mr. Broke said was in danger of imminent collapse?
He indicated it had been completely stripped, and he was worried about it collapsing, that's what he indicated to me, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, the city boarded it up, because it was in such deplorable condition, but yeah, it was his recommendation that it be demolished.
Do you need these in separate motions, or?
No, they can be all together, or however you wish. I don't think we need to treat them individually, only unless you want to.
Well, I just, you know, 702 needs to be demolished, it's the only one that needs to be demolished. I didn't know if you needed a motion for that, and then motions to file liens on the others, or?
You know, and I think the demolition, I'm not certain that the staff needs your approval of that. I think that's a notification, the city manager can certainly expend the funds that have been budgeted for that purpose, and it's been determined by codes, it's subject to a demolition order now, so the city has the authority to act, the staff does, absent, without commission of action to the contrary, I would say.
I'm under the impression that this commission is pretty well taking the stand, we're going to clean this up. So I'd like to leave it at that.
So, I just want to be clear, we've looked at 14 properties here, is what I counted, and some of them are vacant lots, so we're looking at a motion to demolish some structures that are falling down anyway, and to take action on the vacant lots, is that correct? And, of course, the other ones, but...
And my clarification only is this, I think the city manager is providing you notice the staff would like to proceed with demolition, and is giving you notification of that. You don't need a motion to authorize him to proceed in that manner. If there was some action that you wanted taken contrary to that, you would need to voice it. What we're seeking from you is merely a motion to proceed with litigation, so that title can change hands for these properties, city can recover whatever liens it may, and that the property can be restored to a new owner.
So no motion needed?
Well, a motion is needed regarding how you, which properties you want to institute litigation on, but no motion is needed for you to authorize staff to proceed with demolition.
Okay.
That's an inherent budgetary power of the city manager.
Probably we not make a motion to proceed with the legal aspects on all of them.
You can.
And let staff get to them when they get to them.
You're free to do that.
Is there a downside to that, legally, that you know of?
No, I mean, there...
It might create the expectation it's going to happen overnight, which you won't.
Right. It won't happen overnight, however, I would just say from years of this discussion being ongoing, from various commissioners and mayors, that I think it's probably time to just say proceed, and then let us take as big a bites as we can at a time, and you know from a policy standpoint that you're taking the action, not necessarily to recover liens, because that's unlikely, however, to abate a nuisance, hopefully once and for all.
Do I hear a motion?
I would just like to say, the, are you making a blanket motion on all of these?
That's what, that's what the council is advising.
Well, I just wanted to talk about Wilderness Road for just a minute, and I didn't want to, I didn't want us to go in and tear something down when there is some action on the preservation side of that area. Our preservationist is trying to get that area designated on the National Register, and I don't, I don't want to do anything that's going to affect that process. Now, she, I did ask her this last week, and she is looking into getting this property excluded, but she has to note that on her process, so, you know, it's not a, it's not what she, they would call a contributing structure necessarily, but I just don't want to act quickly on something that may affect her.
I can, I can respect that, I can also say from just a policy perspective, that this commission is vested with certain obligations and responsibilities, the highest of which are the safety of its citizenry, and this building has been noted since 1989 on this very list, and I, from a legal standpoint, would be hesitant to designate an area with this structure in it.
Right.
And so, I understand, it may be a footnote, it may be something that has to be explained, but the fact of the matter is it already remains condemned, subject to demolition order, and I don't think the city should, from a policy perspective, should halt its actions simply because of an ancillary nomination process.
I just wanted to make note that there's, that there's another process going on that, because we're setting a precedence here.
It's a good one.
But is, are we gonna, is it going to be our policy to tear down the structures before we move, because that may not always need to be what happens? And that's been my whole point all along, is, first of all, we're applying more liens by tearing down a structure. I know it's going to abate the problem, but sometimes we may not want those structures to go down. They may be salvageable, and I know it's about safety, but we're setting a precedence here, and I think we just need to note that and be very careful.
Well, I will say this, I don't think it will change, what you're voting on tonight is to institute, or commence, or continue in litigation for the properties that are before you.
On these properties.
Now, what I think staff has done for a long time is considered each property on a case-by-case basis. It's why you're seeing why one of them was removed from your consideration tonight, because staff goes beyond the call of duty in trying to negotiate with current owners to some amicable end, and it's why you see some structures that have been on this list for decades. So I don't think you're making a policy shift, other than you're saying, let's don't let these stay on the list that long, trying to work something out. I mean, that is maybe a policy shift, but as far as saying structures have to be demolished prior to them being sold, I don't think you're agreeing to that, because as a matter of fact, we've done the direct opposite of that on a number of occasions, when there have been owners who, or individuals who have expressed an interest during the process, and the city has said, okay, Fitzpatrick, for instance, there were several structures there, the city was going to demolish them, but a property owner during the process, or a business owner in Danville said, "I would like, I think those can be restored, and I'd like to." So the city said, "If you want to bid on the method auction, we won't demolish them prior to that," and they were restored, and they're viable structures now. So I think each staff does a good job of looking at these properties on a case-by-case basis, and I don't see any reason to why that would change simply by your vote tonight.
I was trying to, I don't ever remember one being taken down or considered for demolition that didn't at some point come before us, even if it didn't have to necessarily.
That's right, because I think it's a unique situation, and I think staff feels more comfortable in giving you advance notice, notification of the action, so if you felt like the notion was repugnant to you, for whatever reason, that you could then voice it, and it could be a part of the process.
Is there, I keep, I keep thinking there has to be a better way to somehow, for the city to acquire these properties and get them into the right hands, instead of putting it up to chance at an auction. Could, is it possible to forgive the liens and help the owners get it?
The problem is...
Or forgive the liens and let the city acquire it for that, and then possibly get it in different hands?
If you are in the first lien position in real property, then you have some of those options, such, the city is not in the first lien position in any of these cases, they're subject to numerous liens, so you buy the property as it is. If there are no other liens but the city's, that could be something negotiated, but it's still a quid pro quo, you're saying, "I'm giving you," the consideration is the forgiveness of the liens, or just like you would do with the first mortgage holder. Now, I don't, I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but it's not feasible from a legal standpoint to swap it, unless there are only one owner of the liens, which none of these apply to, because you can't take the property and wipe away the interest of others outside of a due process foreclosure proceeding.
Right. Okay, that answers my question.
Okay.
That makes me feel better.
So do I hear a motion?
Well, I want to make a comment on the, the one, is it Wilderness, Wilderness Road?
Yes, sir.
It's been vacant since 1989, and we probably have more documentation from the outside, the inside, and the backside, and every place else, and then the guy who... And then the guy who owns it, I'm not going to call the names out, purchased it for $100, I think back when the herb renewal was still active in this community and has really done nothing to it at all. It's sad that it's sitting right in the middle of, like you say, this district that may get the national recognition, but it, it's, to me, it's the worst one of all of them.
I'd like to comment that I think Bridgette and her staff's done a good job of vetting some of these and we've probably saved more property than we're scrutinizing right now where the owners have turned and said, I'm going to fix it. I don't want you to take it. So there is that positive lien. My concern on all this has always been, you know, the costs that might come to the city. And I spent a lot of time on this yesterday and out of the 14 properties, we'll take out the one on delay, so now we're down to 13. And it looks to me like, in my opinion, six of them we should move on, no doubt. Another three be close to break even and four of them are actually vacant lots that we might, might lose money on just to go on judgment with them. And, and I kind of wonder if we should just leave those alone for now and work on the ones that we want to clean up. Because that was kind of how things got started. We wanted to clean up our city a little bit. I don't think the vacant lot is a problem, but maybe I could be corrected on that.
I would think the vacant lot would be more valuable.
That's what I was going to say.
You don't have to incur the cost of demolition.
Well, and the city does still incur mowing, maintenance cost on those, you know, even though the structure is demolished, the city still mows them regularly. So the, the costs continue to rise, so to speak. And, and as far as them being vacant, they are more marketable from someone like a Habitat for Humanity or someone who may be able to use, to put the property back into use.
And the only way to get it in hands that will do something with it is to go through this process.
True.
And to me, the vacant lots are a little more straightforward. I mean, we don't, we don't really have to do anything else.
No, they're straightforward, but there's so many liens on them and what they're valued at. It's a little bit upside down, but I understand. I just wanted to have this conversation because we're not going to go through this process. We've already identified in really winning financially, but winning for our community.
And I think what you won't be able to weigh now, but you will in years to come, is the ripple effect that may materialize in the community for those individuals who may not upkeep their property to code.
Yeah, but, by, by us not sending the signal, that's what's gotten us in this condition anyway. So somebody make a motion, please, whatever it may be.
Correct me if I'm, my motion's incorrect, but I move that we proceed down the normal course of legal avenues on the properties identified in this report.
That's fine. We just need your specific approval to commence litigation.
But would we exclude in this report the delayed one? Would that be part of the motion?
Yes. So every property identified with the exception of 222 Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Martin Luther King. Yep.
So is that your motion, Commissioner?
That is, that is exactly what you said is my motion.
Do I hear a second?
If he repeats it, I'll second it, but.
We don't have that kind of time.
I'll, I'll second it.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call questions, vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Scott, that concludes our normal course of business. Do we have need for an executive session?
Yes, sir. I would request that we go into executive session this evening to talk about two topics that qualify for that executive session. First one being personnel matters, the second one being property acquisition. And I would advise that we may be in executive session for 30 minutes or longer.
I'm betting an hour. Do I, do I hear a motion to move into executive session?
I move that we vote not to have an executive session tonight.
There's the first.
I will move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel, a personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61810-1F and for property acquisition for which publicity at the present stage might or would likely affect the value per KRS 61810-1B and that it be no longer than 27 minutes.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion?
27 minutes is too long.
Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. We are in executive session.
I move to return to regular session.
We have a motion to, and a second to return to regular session. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. We are in regular session. Madam Clerk?
Staff would ask that you hire Kevin Bug and Tristan Turner to the position of part-time or full-time firefighter recruits with their usual probationary measures.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Next.
That's all.
Just the one? Any further business to come before the commission? Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
Motion made, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. We adjourned.